Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone to the November 11th, 2021 work session of Henrico County's School Board. The first item on our agenda is the actual approval of the agenda is their motion to approve the agenda.
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
It's been properly moved by Mrs. Augburn as their second.
Second.
Been seconded by Mrs. Shea. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. The agenda is approved. Before I move to the next item on the agenda, which is our closed session, on behalf of the Board and the Superintendent, we want to acknowledge, we want to appreciate, we want to recognize all veterans as we celebrate and as we commemorate Veterans Day. If you're here in the building and you're a veteran, if you could stand so we could recognize you and to all those who are listening and watching us, we want to recognize you as well. Any veterans here? Even though we don't have any present, we do know that there may be some who are watching and there may be some in our respective families. Can we just give a clap of appreciation for them right now? The next item on our agenda is our closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the school board going to close session for the discussion of matters covered under items A1 and A2 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, discipline, and release of contract for specific school board employees and the admission and discipline of specific students.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. It's been properly moved by Mrs. Shea as their second.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. We will now go into closed session. We will reconvene the work session at the conclusion of our closed meeting. The next item on our agenda is the certification of closed session. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
I move that the school board certify it by recorded vote. To the best of each school member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Thank you so much. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Mrs. Shea, seconded by Mrs. Consella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. The closed session has been certified. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Good afternoon. For the first item, I am recommending that the school board approve the expulsion of student case number 21-22-S-1 for a violation of the Code of Student Conduct, and the name of the student is protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve the Superintendent's recommendation for consideration of recommendation for expulsion of student number 21-22-S-1?
I move that the school board approve the expulsion of student case number 21-22-S-1 for violation of the Code of Student Conduct.
Thank you so much, Madam. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. It's been moved by Mrs. Augburn and properly seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. The expulsion of the student is approved.
Thank you. Next, I am recommending that the school board approve the expulsion of student case number 21-22-S-2 for violation of the Code of Student Conduct, and the name of the student is protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Is there a motion for the consideration of recommendation for expulsion of student number 21-22-S-2?
I move that the school board approve the expulsion of student case number 21-22-S-2 for violation of the Code of Student Conduct.
Thank you so much, Madam. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. It has been moved by Mrs. Atkins and properly seconded by Mrs. Augburn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. The expulsion of the student is approved.
Thank you. Next, I am recommending the Board's approval of the following personnel actions: hires, changes in assignment, promotions, and separations.
Is there a motion to approve the personnel items?
I move that the school board approve the hires, changes in assignment, promotions, and separations recommended by the Superintendent.
Thank you so much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. It has been properly moved by Mrs. Shea and seconded by Mrs. Consella. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. The personnel items are approved.
Thank you. For the next item, this is related to the Board's 2022 legislative agenda, and as you know, Mrs. Lammy joined us at our last meeting to get input and feedback from the Board related to how that legislative agenda would shape up, and she's adjusted the final product based on your feedback and would offer the opportunity to discuss that with you now and answer any questions you may have before we seek your approval of the legislative agenda. Mrs. Lammy?
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell, good evening, and we are really just in a very, very different landscape today as I was with you all previous Board meeting. We've had an election, we have had a lot of change, and some of that will become probably a lot clearer as far as people's positions on various things as we get closer to the General Assembly. But it's always interesting to work with new people. Interestingly enough, though, Henrico's delegation did not change, which is great for me. I already have these folks pretty much, I can contact them, and they are very, very supportive of our school system, so hopefully that will serve us well, we hope. But today, as Dr. Cashwell said, I'm here bringing you the revised document. I appreciate staff input to getting some additional information and some updated information. So we present this to you today. If you all are comfortable with it, you will approve it tonight, and then the next step in our process is for us to create the updated legislative brochure incorporating probably some of the data that will be presented here to you all tonight. So that will be our final document that we will send out to you so that you will be able to see it before we distribute it.
Well, again, thank you, Ms. Lammy, again, for your hard work as well as the staff. I'll start to my left with Ms. Atkins.
I want to first start with thanking you for adding that language that we discussed around advancing educational equity, excellence, and economic opportunity for Black Americans. It's critically important that we acknowledge that and that we have some language around that in here as we continue to advocate. So I wanted to thank you for listening and responding, and I'm pleased with the response in here, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Augburn.
I did have just one thing I forgot last time, and that was on page four of the longer document. No, excuse me, it's 4.c, page 11. And we didn't talk about this last time, but funding caps. And from what your information shows us, that it's based on 2009 numbers. And I just want to know a little bit more about the funding caps and its support positions and that kind of thing. It's not something we've talked a lot about, but I was just curious if you could give us more information on that, and how are we doing anything based on 2009 numbers? That's concerning.
Well, and it probably should have been updated in this document. We are very, very committed to hitting this issue very hard in this session. The support cap, in fact, I just had a conversation yesterday with one of our legislators that it is really something that we have used that term for so long, but people don't really understand what that means. And I think when we spell out the differences in the funding, it is just, it's really startling with how much the state pays and how much the locality pays. For instance, the support cap, when we're talking about simply assistant principals, for instance, and these are based on numbers from two years ago. They only do it, they run it every other year, but as of, no, yeah, it's 2020, which will be two years when we meet in the General Assembly on 2022. We are having with assistant principals in the state of Virginia, I mean, in Virginia, we have 2861. We have that number of assistant principals, and the state is only funding, I think it's 960 of those. The deficit is almost $40,000, what localities are having to pick up. And that's the message we're trying to make sure that they get. I so appreciate your bringing it forward. It's something that's of extreme importance to all of us, and we really are, I think, as a collective body, I met with my colleagues on Monday of the largest school divisions in the state of Virginia. We call ourselves the Big Eight, but we do represent an awful lot of our students and the state, and we are very committed to, first of all, teaching people what that term really means.
Right.
And why it was established in 2009, why it was done, and the tragedy is that we've never changed it, and we have obviously changed drastically our economics. But let me make a note of that particular observation, and let's try to get some current numbers in our document. Thank you, Ms. Augburn.
And I just want to add some context to what Mrs. Lammy is saying. So, you know, certainly, we have seen continued advocacy from school divisions in Virginia related to this support cap that is alluded to here. And what I think Mrs. Lammy is articulating is a lot of folks don't really know what that means when we say eliminate the support cap. So this is attempting to spell that out a little more specifically. So what happened is, in 2009, when we saw unprecedented cuts to education, 2009, 2010 year, the cuts to funding in state education were significant, and along with that came these caps put on support positions, which includes an awful lot. So when you look at the SOQ for Virginia, for example, she was using the example for assistant principals, the ratio of assistant principals we actually receive state funding for to the number of pupils is very small. You will find that most school divisions in Virginia couldn't operate with that few assistant principals to do right by our students. The same is true, for example, for instructional assistants, when you look at the SOQ and the cap that's put on that. And we know that it only calls for a certain number within special education and kindergarten, but we understand the value of having instructional assistants beyond that. So while we staff our schools with those critical support positions, they are funded almost entirely from the local budget. That's something the state's not picking up once you've reached the cap. And so those caps were imposed in 2009, and so what we've continued to advocate for is that either the SOQ be revised or that support cap be lifted and that funding in general for education be restored to pre-2009 levels. I mean, you think about what we're doing as school divisions, you know, so many years later, certainly more, and we consider the wraparounds and supports. And while we've seen some movement and changes in the ratios with school counselors and so on, this is a critical issue. I know for this Board and Boards and administrations for public schools all across Virginia that we restore funding to pre-recession levels and move away from these support caps. And of course, we're lucky that at the local level, our locality continues to step in and fund our schools and make up the differences where the state does not, but this is certainly a priority issue.
Well, and it makes you think about the smaller school districts. I mean, I've talked to some people I know that are in southwestern Virginia where their budgets are very small, and they are not able to fund these positions. And so I appreciate the fact that you're advocating for that on our behalf, but also working with the other school divisions to drive home the point that we need to restore funding so that it's not on the backs of all the counties as much, because I know some counties are more able than others to provide that extra support. We are very fortunate that we have the support of the Board of Supervisors and the county manager to make up what the state doesn't provide. But I also think your point of bringing this a little bit forward, the general public doesn't understand how this works and how funding from the state is done. And, you know, even when it comes to teacher raises and things like that, you know, the state will say, well, we're going to give teachers a raise, and they don't understand the matching part of it that counties have to do and all of that. So giving the public more information about how the funding model works is, I think, is great, too. So I appreciate that. So any more information you get on that as it goes forward, I know that we're cranking up now and we're getting busy. But also, last time, we talked about pre-K just a little bit, and so I'm hoping that it is right up there with some of the main points we're making this year. I know Mrs. Consella mentioned it last time about recruiting and retaining teachers and expanding pre-K. I know that pre-K for us is a priority, and we have it in a lot of our schools, but, you know, funding and of that and expanding pre-K is so important and makes such a, as a former pre-K teacher, I really, it's important to me because I have seen the difference that it makes to have kids have pre-K, have that experience, and not to place it on the backs of families. And that's where some of the disparities start, is when you have families who can afford like a private pre-K situation and those that can't. That equity issue is top of mind with me. So if we have it, it's available to all families is only right. So I appreciate you bringing, I mean, you have a long list of things that you're advocating for, so, but I appreciate all the work that you do. It's going to be an interesting January, February, and March.
Will be interesting, yes. But we hope productive.
Truly is.
And I'm so glad you brought up the pre-K issue. Have not been able to talk personally with Kathy Glazer, who heads up the Virginia Early Childhood Foundation. She and I have an appointment next Tuesday, but Ms. Atkins, I think you had expressed also an interest in this and the childcare kind of partnership piece that goes with that. But interestingly enough, next, let's see, no, it's December 2nd, I believe, we have a joint summit, which they do every year, with the House and Senate Education Committees, and the very first thing on the agenda is pre-K. So that must still be a priority, which we had said we were a little bit concerned that maybe the whole issue had kind of gotten diminished, but I was very pleased to see that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shea.
Thank you so much. So many of the things in this document are so important, and we could talk about each one for a long time, but I'll just continue to highlight what I did last time, which is teacher salaries. I think we're really at a tipping point here, and, but as I mentioned, you know, as I spoke to last time, we have a great partnership with our government side, and they do more than their fair share to try to make this happen and compensate our employees, but we need help from the state to compensate our employees the way they should be, very similar to how Dr. Cashwell was talking about how they do more than their fair share with the support positions, with the support cap. And so, you know, and then also listening to Ms. Augburn and Dr. Cashwell talk about, you know, that 2009 hit to educational spending, that's pretty much an entire cohort of K-12 students who have gone through with this reduction of investment from the state. And when we think about it kind of in those terms, that's significant.
That's significant, it is.
Yeah, that is significant. That's a whole generation of learners, and so it's time for the, time for the state to do their part. And then also, just to highlight the importance of maintaining public funding, staying with public schools, and that any schools that receive state funds should be required to meet the same accountability and requirements that public schools are required to meet. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Ms. Consella.
Yes, I'd just like to echo what my colleagues have said and what, repeat really what I said last time, last meeting when you presented this, which is the future of education is at stake in the state. And that's really what we're fighting for. The one that jumps off the page to me is the funding and highly qualified staff. People are choosing, I mean, the pandemic, you know, we had a teacher crisis prior to the pandemic, and now it's even worse, and the pandemic gave folks time to reflect, and they're not choosing education, they're not choosing to stay in education. So to me, the other priorities, if we can't, we need to fully fund, we need to do better than being ranked 30-something in the country in the state of Virginia. So I'm so glad you have positive work and relationships. I know any way the Board can support you and the Superintendent, please let us know because restoring funding, I mean, the future of education is at stake. I mean, I'm not just worried about today, I'm worried about next September 8th, the following September 8th. I'm really worried about who's going to be in our schools to teach our children. So just thank you for all the work that you're doing. I look forward to the updates.
Well, and I think just to piggyback on that concept, we also have talked a lot among ourselves about taking a look at partnering with our higher ed people to talk about this issue, because the numbers, I think, now, this has been four years old data, but I feel like there were 600,000 teacher, new teachers that were leaving their academic preparation entering the workforce. They are now down to not even 300,000. You have cut that number in half, and it's continuing to decline, which is, I think, alarming, and it should be for the higher, our higher ed partners. So, you know, hopefully, that's a conversation that we're going to start that we haven't really probably, you know, done that frequently in the past, but that's something that a couple of us are really interested in.
Thank you so much. I mean, everything is dependent on the education of our children. I mean, it drives everything in our, in our local economy to the future of our workforce. So just thank you.
Reverend Cooper, may I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
One follow-up question, Ms. Lammy. Are we having our legislative breakfast this year? I know last year we did not. I'm curious if, how we're connecting with our Henrico legislators this year.
We had talked about it earlier in, or rather, I should say, later in the summer of this past year, and wondered if it was really still feasible to open up our schools. I think our positivity rate was rather high right then. I am open to, you know, opening it up again and discussing it again. Happy to do that if you all have an interest.
And Mrs. Lammy and I have talked about, you know, she alluded to putting together the brochure as a result of your approval of the agenda, and so in addition to the brochure, I think we have an opportunity to bat around some other ideas. I think what the Board put together last school year was really creative with the video component that went along with it.
Right.
So, you know, we'd like an opportunity, if it's okay with the Board, to go back to the drawing board and think about some potential ideas, whether it may be breakfast or something else and videos. So looking to change it up a bit and get back with you with some ideas for that.
Thank you.
And one of my colleagues actually has said they tried to do theirs by, now, they have, sort of like, we don't have a huge number of Board members, they tried to do it by Zoom, and, you know, it's not as good, of course not, because, you know, you always want that personal touch, but it may be a possibility as well. That might be one of our ideas we could explore.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Ms. Lammy, for the revisions and the final draft, and look forward to hearing, hopefully, and seeing the success of your lobbying efforts.
We hope so.
Yes, ma'am.
We're going to be doing everything we can.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Superintendent?
All right, thanks for, again, the questions and the affirmation of the items included here within related to the legislative agenda. So should the Board support the draft as it's presented to you? I am seeking your approval of the legislative agenda for 2022.
Board members, is there a motion for the approval of the 2022 legislative agenda?
I move that the school board approve the 2022 legislative agenda.
Thank you so much, Madam. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Consella, has been moved by Mrs. Augburn. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. The 2022 legislative agenda is approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again, Mrs. Lammy, and we look forward to reporting back to the Board, both with that brochure and some ideas of how we can continue to engage our legislators in important conversations and efforts related to this advocacy. All right, for the next item, I do have an update on health and safety conditions, as always, from our Henrico County Public Schools Health Committee, and Dr. Tigan will present that update. Dr. Tigan?
Good afternoon, Chairman Cooper, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. Again, I have a quick update for you today, but hopefully it has some good information for you. Today's agenda includes the current transmission level for Henrico County, an update on vaccinations to include information about the efforts to vaccinate our five-to-11-year-olds, and the current distribution of proctored COVID-19 test kits, and a reminder of our plans to begin screening those involved in winter sports on Monday. As is routine, I will start with the transmission level. On Monday, the VDH released the most recent health data for Henrico County. Two weeks ago, the transmission level, you'll recall, was high, and last Monday, for the first time in months, Henrico dipped to the substantial transmission level. And based on the seven-day data from October 31st to November 6th, what you're seeing here is the number of new cases per 100,000 was down to 79.5, and the percentage of PCR tests that were positive had decreased to 3.9%. So as of this past Monday, Henrico remains at that substantial level of transmission. And when we look at our school data, our school, the level of school impact, we begin to see that last week, there were 44 positive cases and three outbreaks in schools. This is less than half the cases from two weeks ago, where we had 90 cases, but the outbreaks have remained constant. I do have to say that since Tuesday, however, there have been four additional outbreaks in our schools. We do continue to see about twice the absenteeism this year as compared to our standard that we're using of 2018-19, and this has been consistent throughout the last six weeks. Our Human Resources continues its efforts to recruit strong candidates for our schools, but the teacher shortage continues to make finding candidates difficult and results in staff capacity being strained. Overall, the level of school impact remains at medium, and therefore, the overall status of Henrico County is at that substantial transmission level. In order to reduce the transmission level, we continue to focus on our mitigation strategies, and vaccinations are one of these strategies. Currently, the focus is on the vaccination efforts for the five-to-11-year-olds. This past Monday, there was a Bridge Builders Academy. Dr. Danny Avula, the Director of the Richmond-Henrico Health Districts, kicked off the session for us. He shared details about the vaccine itself and why it is important for families to consider vaccinating their younger children. Dr. Avula was then joined by key members of the Virginia Department of Health staff and Robin Gilbert, our School Health Services Supervisor, to answer questions that were presented by our families. The session was recorded and is on the Division's website if anyone missed it and would like to see it. Information was also shared about the specific vaccination clinics that are being held for five-to-11-year-olds. The first clinic in Henrico will be at Fairfield Middle School this Saturday, November 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and the second clinic will be held the following Saturday, November 20th, also from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The Virginia Department of Health will return to these same sites three weeks later to provide the second dose of the vaccine. It is important to note that families need to make an appointment, and that is done online at vax.rchd.com, and that information is on the slide here. Children may also be vaccinated by their local pediatrician or family physician in their offices or one of the many pharmacies in the area. So these are but one opportunity, there are others. And in addition to efforts to vaccinate our five-to-11-year-olds, we continue to investigate ways to bring vaccination to our schools for these children, and more information will be presented soon about those opportunities. And so we continue to investigate the exposures and work to support staff and families to reduce time away from face-to-face instruction when there is a COVID-positive case. And part of the support we are providing is the distribution of the At Home By Next Now test kits. The schools and offices began to mass distribute kits on Wednesday, October 20th, and they have distributed 578 of these kits at this point. The majority of the kits were distributed to students, with only 50 being distributed to our to our staff members. As a reminder, these are given to students who are quarantined due to an exposure so that they can test on day five to possibly return by day eight if they're still asymptomatic, and also for specific cases where there's been someone showing symptoms and able to take a test kit home with them when they're sent home from the clinic. 20 schools have requested additional test kits, resulting in an additional 318 kits being transferred from our warehouse to our schools, and we are currently monitoring inventory and expiration dates closely. And we hope to order more kits that will be arriving after the winter break. And anything ordered before then, we're cautious because we know just when the kits are expiring and trying to limit our inventory. And next, I would like to provide a quick update on the winter athletic screening testing. We have been working hand-in-hand with the Virginia Department of Health and our vendor to solidify the scheduling of the screening testing at each of our secondary schools. Each school will be assigned a specific day of the week and a specific time slot. Typically, testing will occur Monday through Thursday with no testing on Fridays. Team rosters at the high school level should be set by this evening, and testing for winter athletes and coaches will begin on Monday. The middle schools begin tryouts next week, and testing will begin on Monday, November 29th. We cannot thank our athletic directors and our school administrators enough for their efforts to have testing launch on Monday. Many of our high school athletic directors are hosting football playoff games tomorrow evening, and others have state volleyball championships on Saturday, but they are making time to do this for, to keep their student athletes healthy and safe. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, as always, Dr. Tigan. I'm going to start with Ms. Consella.
Yes, I think I'm just going to go right to, knowing that my colleagues will certainly cover some of the other hot topics, I have to say, in my district, I'm hearing the most from about the winter athletic testing. I've been told to, that it's creating more division, that we're being discriminatory, that we should not treat, everyone should have access to the testing. Can you, can you say, and I have principals that are being accused of making a decision that they did not make, could you please explain the operational decision that was made for, and why we are doing winter testing and we did not do fall testing?
Absolutely. The Health Committee did recommend the testing of winter athletes. Our athletes are moving from predominantly outdoor sports in the fall to indoor sports, close contact for the winter season. That decision was supported by the Division Leadership Team, and thereby, you know, we have, we have gone ahead and are, you know, recommending the testing of the winter athletes. And so that's where the decision level was made, and it is accessible to all students. All students can be tested, and, you know...
All athletes?
I'm sorry, all athletes, yes. Please, we don't want to misspeak here and have people think something different. This is specifically about our winter athletes. And so, but all students can test whether they're fully vaccinated or not, but if they're not fully vaccinated, then they are required to test.
Do we expect this to change?
Do not. This is really about making sure we're keeping our athletes healthy and that we're keeping in-class instruction happening, not only for our athletes, but for all of our students.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shea.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. So I have some bad puns about being in the orange level, but I'll save them for myself. But it is, it is super exciting and really hoping that we can continue that trend and we get down to yellow and perhaps blue exists somewhere out there that, you know, that we'll eventually get to. When we look at the load on schools, you mentioned that absence rates are about double what they are from, I guess, two years ago, our baseline. Do we have any information to know if that is related directly to illness or just a carryover of perhaps some habits from last school year?
I don't have any, anything that I could tie specifically. I'm sure that it's a result of both of those things. And that is something we have looked at in just making sure that as kids are out being quarantined, that they're properly recorded in the system as such, and so on, so that we're looking at things that could be, you know, routine-type maintenance things that we do as adults in buildings versus what our kids and families are doing to keep healthy.
And when we are looking at relieving staffing, I mean, that is just, it's such a, it's just such a challenge. And so are we still actively recruiting substitutes and all of those things?
Yes, ma'am. We are recruiting substitutes, we are recruiting teachers. Our HR department is busy looking to recruit our December graduates from around the state and elsewhere.
I was with a student teacher who's a December graduate this morning and kind of plugging, hey, what are you doing after December? But the application for substituting is on our website, correct? And substitutes can choose their jobs they pick up, so what days of the week and what schools and what levels.
Absolutely. They can customize it.
Yeah, and so there's a lot of flexibility there, and I think that's important for our public to know, and that's really a way that people can step up and support our schools and our teachers. I have heard such great things about our take-home test kits from both families and staff and just the accessibility to testing and how it's just kind of really busted that door open in a good way so that all of our family have access to testing. I do have more questions about the winter athletic testing, but I kind of cheated and looked at Reverend Cooper's screen, and I know he has some questions. So I'm going to let him tackle that, and I'll loop back if...
We can report her to Dr. Noel.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Ms. Auburn?
I will echo what Ms. Consella said about who she's hearing from, because I'm hearing about winter testing too. But I'm getting questions like, my child, and I think I sent this one to you, my child has a, an antibody test that they took, or they have just been tested, or they've had COVID, so they're no longer, you know, they've got, they think they have antibodies, or they were, you know, they've received a vaccine, all of that kind, those many, many ins and outs of all of this stuff. So I'm just curious, what are our guidelines, if you could be very specific? Because I think some parents are confused. They think every athlete has to be tested, they think that's what they're hearing at least. So if you could just give us an overview of exactly how we're going to do this for those that are listening.
Yes, ma'am. And I will start by saying, we have done this in consultation with the Virginia Department of Health, really, you know, with their guidelines and the CDC guidelines, that those students, you know, we were asking that everyone be tested. If a student is fully vaccinated, which means that they have had one injection of the Johnson and Johnson and it's been two weeks, or two injections of the Pfizer or Moderna and it's been two weeks past that second dose, then they are fully vaccinated. So that is one way of, if you choose not, if you don't want to participate, you can provide that proof of vaccination. You can also, if you have had a case of COVID within the last 90 days, it's a 90-day window that that will cover not being tested. And so with that proof of diagnosis and the date, they'll calculate out 90 days, and there will be no testing for that student if the parent wants during that time. The antibodies test that is not being used, and is not being used routinely in most places is my understanding from our conversations with the Health Department. And so, but of course, even if a student is fully vaccinated, they can still, their parent can opt them into testing. And so it is, it truly is open for everybody.
Well, and what I'm hearing is the people who want to opt out. I haven't heard from anyone who's worried about opting in. They're just, I think there's some misinformation and misunderstanding. I know it's a lot on our staff to get all this information out. So I think the clearer we can be about what you just said for our parents, the better off we'll be. I know it's a, it's a heavy lift to get all this out.
And I do think some people who were tested maybe early on in COVID have this perception of what the test is and, you know, the level of invasion into the nasal cavity and, you know, to the sinuses and so on.
Yeah, because this one is a little bit different.
This is just literally at the lower, like, quarter to a half inch of the nasal cavity that they're swabbing with a soft cotton swab.
Right. Okay. Thank you. That's all for me. I appreciate all your hard work, as always.
I just thought you might, since it was a good segue and this question might came up, so I'm sorry if I'm jumping in front of any board members. I didn't see his screen, but I would just say, you talked about the type of test and the relative invasiveness. Can you speak to who would be administering the test? Because I've also received that question quite a bit. There's maybe a misperception that a coach or someone would be doing this rather than trained medical personnel.
Absolutely. It is not a coach, and later this afternoon, you're going to see money coming through, a grant that we have received to help support any and all testing within our schools for students and staff. And that is to support the additional hire of nurses that will be in both positions as like directors of testing and coordinators that would help facilitate and talk to parents about questions, as well as some LPNs that would help us with contact tracing, should there be a need for that. And I know we've talked to one of our neighboring school divisions, and, you know, the good news is that it has not been that significant on the positive tests and the need for contact tracing. So that's positive, and I think that will improve as our community numbers go down.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, madam. Ms. Atkins?
Thank you. I have two very short questions. I know Reverend Cooper is going to ask some about the other topic I was going to ask about, so I'll refrain from doing that in this moment.
They're all looking at your screen.
But I do have questions around the absenteeism that you mentioned. Do we have a report or data captured that can show us the reasons behind the absenteeism? I think it's important to differentiate between what's impactful perhaps from COVID and what's impactful perhaps from behavior, or what's impactful from maybe just children being ill from something else. Do we have a report that can show us and tease that information out?
Yes, we can run reports that, every school can, is able to run a report to look at their students and what the absenteeism rate is, what it, you know, what it is by different, any number of different things, including the reason for the absenteeism.
Yeah, but I would just add that some of the categories, and we absolutely can run it that way, are general. So if it says student illness, it doesn't indicate whether that illness was COVID-related unless it's a quarantine, and then we know it's COVID-related. And so some students are marked quarantine-present. So they're not physically present, they're learning remotely because they're in quarantine, and they are not counted absent. But then there is quarantine-absent if the student is not well enough to participate. So there are some ways you'll be able to see in the data, but when it's illness, we're just not able to tease out what the illness is. But certainly, some of that trend data would be helpful, I'm sure. Happy to provide that.
Thank you. I'd love to see those numbers and discern between some of the reasons behind the absenteeism. But then I also want to take a look and see how that might be impactful academically. And that might be very helpful in providing even recommendations or even sharing what that story is before we get to the end of the school year. So I'd love to see that report. And then the other question is around our School Health Advisory Board. I know that we are bringing that back into life, and I'm excited because we also have to make sure, in addition to talking about COVID, that we talk about health and wellness physically and mentally in addition to this. So would you share an update on where we are with the School Health Advisory Board?
Absolutely. The School Health Advisory Board will be holding a, their next meeting is November 17th, and it'll be at Hermitage. This information is posted on our upcoming events on our website, as well as on the calendar of events on our website. There'll be another meeting then in January, January 19th, and that will be in the multipurpose room at our central office facility on Nine Mile Road.
And were we able to fulfill all the seats for the board?
Yes, ma'am. The, all 20 members, there's a, you know, fully slate, a full slate of individuals, which as you will recall, those 20 members are 10 parents that are coming to from each magisterial district, as well as two principals, and then eight seats for community members and students.
Great work. I believe this committee is so necessary as we make sure we keep our eyes on COVID. We cannot, we, I can't stress it enough, we need a committee in place to look at all the other mental and physical wellness issues or concerns that are happening with our children. So great work to you and your team for re-establishing that because it's definitely needed. And so those were my two questions, and that's all I have, Reverend Cooper.
Thanks, Ms. Atkins. So real quick, Dr. Tigan, a couple of questions, not many. So we have the confirmed vendor.
Yes.
Has the confirmed vendor confirmed that they're adequately staffed to take care of this at all of our 21 secondary schools?
They have told us that they are adequately staffed. We've met with them a couple of times this past week, and we've met with them previously, and they have indicated that they have no staffing concerns at this point.
Thank you so much for that. So now we know all coaches and staff will be required to participate in testing. Will this requirement also extend to volunteers who support our teams and athletes?
If they are consistently, you know, in that volunteer-coach role, then yes, they would be expected to participate because they're going to be around our students in close proximity.
I think it's important that the general public know that it's a universal standard for anyone who comes in close proximity to the students in that context.
Correct.
So thanks, thank you so much. So the screening will occur, what, once weekly, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's confirmed on that. Can you just talk about the process, when applicable, for a student or coach to request a religious or medical accommodation to the COVID-19 testing requirement?
If they're seeking a religious exemption, we would, we would go through the same process for that that we would normally do for any other type of vaccines. There's a process in place that we use normally for our students, and so we would follow that process.
Okay. Thank you so much. So testing will occur outside of instructional time, before school, during lunch, and after school. Will each school have a different testing schedule, or will all high schools follow unified scheduling protocol, and the same for middle schools?
It varies. There are, like our high schools, we have consistent times every morning for eight of our high schools. But other than that, what is consistent is what their set time is on set day will remain consistent. We have looked at some needing to alter that schedule a little bit during the Thanksgiving week, as obviously there's limited school time, but we do know that our, some of our teams will still be actively practicing during that time, and so we'll be testing that week. So that will be a week that will be slightly different.
So since it's consistent, I'm assuming initially we will contact students, parents, guardians for the schools of that information, and I'm assuming that the only re-contact would be if there's a variation or variance to that?
Yes, and the, and parents, just so you know as well, parents, once kids start testing, they get results for their students. testing, they get results for their students. So it's really important that they're checking their email and so on.
Okay. A couple more quickly. So what, if any, are the potential penalties or consequences for not participating in the required testing, and how would they be enforced?
If they don't test in a given week, they would not be allowed to participate. And, you know, and then that's, there is a challenge if parents, being able to get them to another facility during another test window. But for the majority of our schools, we have one test window on a given day, that's when we have the testing available.
Okay. And so timeframe, so will it be 24-hour notification of test?
They have told us 20, they've, that's what they're saying, 24 hours.
Awesome. And, and really, so give me a quick example of what a testing protocol would look like for, say, a basketball team, or just?
The students who are testing would come into like maybe a classroom or auxiliary gym where there's tables set up, they'll be able to take a seat, they'll take their swab, they'll, you know, that's, they'll open it up, someone's there helping talk them, walk them through it. Might be a little slower in the beginning, but will get a little faster, is that the student themselves will actually do the swab and then be able to seal up their sample and provide it and leave it for testing.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Dr. Atkins. All I have.
Okay.
Dr. Cashwell? Yes, ma'am.
I was gonna say, did she? Thank you, Reverend Cooper. I have a few additional questions. So some questions I've gotten have been, the transmission rates were higher in the fall than they are now, so why didn't we test indoor athletes in the fall, but we are doing this testing now?
And when we were in the fall, you know, the, yes, test, the number of cases right now was lower, but at that point in time, we weren't set up to test, and we have also seen the results of not testing, the impact that it's had, not only on our athletes, on some specific teams, as well as then the impact on the classroom, because these athletes go into classrooms and then with contact tracing, that's more students that are exposed in quarantine.
And so, thank you. I think, absolutely, and I think some people missed the, this program didn't exist in September, or it wasn't up and running in August and September.
That's correct. We, we expressed interest as a school division in participating in the Vista program, but it wasn't to be set to actually be implemented until late in October.
We're a very large school system, and you, most of the large school systems are just coming on board right now with the winter athletes.
Thank you. And then the million-dollar question is, why are we only requiring unvaccinated individuals to participate?
Those, this is just, you know, when we think about the mitigation levels, those that are fully vaccinated have that additional mitigation level, you know, and so being able to test, that that's one of the things that we felt like if they were fully vaccinated, that they could opt out.
All right. Oh, and then the other?
I will share, because I know I've heard comments, is that, you know, when it refers to breakthrough cases, I will tell you, our health department has indicated that the number of breakthrough cases is not what is reported externally as breakthrough cases. So, you know, there seems to be a little bit of a disconnect between anecdotally what people are saying are breakthrough cases and scientifically what they have in their records as proof that is breakthrough cases.
So what you're, tell me if I'm interpreting that correctly, is while we do have breakthrough cases of people who are vaccinated, it's at a much lower rate of, I guess, catching COVID than an unvaccinated individual.
It's just the, the number is not significant.
And the same, you know, our quarantining rules are different whether you've been vaccinated or not as well. And so this guidance from our, as we've worked with the health department on making this determination, you know, has played into that.
Thank you. And then one last question for me. Of the, of the students and coaches who are part of the testing program, will everyone be tested every week, or is it a random subset?
It's everyone tested every week.
Okay, thank you. And I believe, not to do your job, but I believe Ms. Cancela also had a question.
Give Ms. Ogden first, and I'll come back, Ms. Cancela. You good? Okay. Yeah, Ms. Cancela?
Yes, along the same lines of where Mrs. Shea just went, around the winter testing, I've heard some concerns about medical privacy. I mean, I know we just addressed who was going to be administering the test, so I feel comfortable about that. It's qualified personnel will be administering it, but we've certainly heard about medical privacy and how to ensure medical privacy with their students that are doing the testing.
The parent, let me start by saying the parents can enter the information through a QR code directly into the vendor's system with all the information that's required. Anyone who touches that information once it's in the system has to be HIPAA-trained and HIPAA-qualified, so that the confidentiality of those, of any of the data, it has to be kept, you know?
And then as to the conditions under which the students or grownups are tested, that it's, it would be in a room with other folks, or what does that look like?
Well, it would be in the room of other people coming in to test. It may not be all of them at once, you know, that it would be a...
Since we have choice, that you can choose vaccinated or unvaccinated, it's not necessarily disclosing, you're just a winter athlete or someone participating in winter athletics or supervising or coaching, correct?
Absolutely.
It doesn't necessarily disclose your vaccination status.
No, it does not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cancela. Thank you again, Dr. Tiger, and you and the staff for great work.
Thank you.
Madam Superintendent.
All right. Thank you again, Dr. Tiger, for the health committee update. The next item I have for the board is our annual student membership report, and Dr. Grant and Dr. Hinton are coming forward to provide that presentation for us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. Today, we'll be providing you with an annual update on September 30th, student membership. This data is reflective of the membership data that each school division is required to report to the Virginia Department of Education and reflects students in kindergarten through 12th grade. There are also multiple chapters in board docs with additional data related to student membership. Before we start looking at the data, I wanted to note that membership continues to be impacted by the current pandemic. So while I'll be sharing the same information you are used to seeing annually, data may not be reflective of longer-term trends.
Dr. Hinton, I don't mean to interrupt. Could you get a little closer to the mic or bring it up? It's a little challenging to hear.
In support of the division's strategic goal to provide equitable and secure physical learning environments that inspire community pride, an implementation step of the strategic plan is to annually monitor membership growth to determine short and long-term needs that guide our capital improvement planning efforts. On September 30th, 48,702 students were in membership, which is an annual decrease of 280 students. Since the COVID-19 pandemic, membership has dropped below 50,000 students. This chart shows a comparison of the actual membership and the projected membership since 2012. You can see that typically the accuracy of the projections on average is high. For the past two years, projections have remained at 50,486 due to the difficulty of making long-term projections of student membership with the data anomalies we are seeing the past two years. When we look at the data by grade at the elementary level, we've seen an increase at kindergarten and second grade from the previous year, with all other grade levels showing a slight decline. Overall, we saw an annual increase of 104 students at the elementary level. The increase of 327 kindergarten students offset the smaller declines in the other grade levels. At the middle school level, we saw an annual decrease of 375 students. Middle school cohorts continue to be larger than those at the elementary level. At the high school level, we continue to see our historical trend of a larger ninth-grade cohort that declines as students progress into the 10th through 12th grades. Overall, high school membership increased from the prior year by 84 students. In addition to the number of students in membership, we also annually review how the demographics of our student population are changing over time. In looking at ethnicity and race across the last 10 years, a larger proportion of our students are Asian and Hispanic. Black and white students continue to represent approximately 2/3 of our student population. In looking at the change in the percentage of our economically disadvantaged students, we have increased from 39% in 2012 to 46% in 2021. This represents an 18% change in the actual number of students. And when we look at the change in our English learners, we've seen a 2 percentage point increase in the percentage of students in our membership identified. However, the numbers below the chart show that the actual number of students has increased And lastly, students with disabilities comprise this 12% of our student population, which is a change of 15% from 2012. And now I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. Grant.
Good afternoon. The pupil-to-teacher ratio for elementary, middle, and high schools are shown above, with the fluctuations in enrollment and the movement of students between in-person and virtual. It is difficult to compare this year's data to last year's, last year's or previous year. It is likely going to be difficult to make, make any prediction or comparison for the next few years. I would like to note that PTR is not synonymous with class size. PTR encompasses the additional adults who work with students within the classroom, while class size is the number of students in a given teacher's class. PTR is always lower than class size. I'll turn it back over to Ms., Dr. Hinton.
Thank you. And those are all the, the presentation we have for you today, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hinton. Dr. Grant, we'll start with Ms. Atkins. Actually, let's start, Ms. Cancela.
Well, I'd just like to start by, by thanking, this is the final piece to the puzzle. I think we've, now we've looked at everything that we were trying to do as we planned proactively and comprehensively for the future. We've seen programming. Is it relevant? Is it not? Is it what our students need? We've looked at capacity, we've had building studies done, and now here we are at enrollment. I'd just like to thank Dr. Grant for highlighting the fact that PTR is not class size, it's not students in a class. Thank you. I think that's the first time I've ever heard it presented that way, and I'm so grateful. So thank you for that. I looked at the numbers in some of the support data, and Dr. Hinton, you had some elementary schools in yellow. I would just like for you to state, should folks click on the support documentation in board docs exactly what we did here? I believe the school, elementary schools in yellow are the ones that were impacted by the moving pre-K out of the, out of the school, which frees up functional capacity in that school.
Yes, so any of the capacities that are highlighted in yellow represents that the capacity was changed due to programmatic changes at the school. It also could be due to new construction, such as Holiday or Highland Springs High School.
Okay. And then I'd also like to make a request. Typically, at this time of year, there's a watch report for anything, any of our schools that are over 95% capacity, I think it is, that report isn't included in the reports this year. But it's typically valuable for me when, when I look at, you know, what our membership is doing. But of course, I did actually try to look at it behind the scenes, especially where the secondary is concerned, and this is, thank you for coming forward, Mr. Pritchard. You knew exactly where I was going.
And I can lead into that a bit. As you heard it, when Dr. Hinton and Dr. Grant were sharing our membership, and I think the word data anomaly has been used a number of times because it's certainly true when we're trying to look at projections and trends in enrollment, we're obviously down approximately 2,000 students. So that doesn't mean, though, to your point, Mrs. Cancela, that we've stopped looking at issues of capacity and long-term planning. Those are critically important pieces of our strategic plan. I know priorities this board continues to advocate for, making sure that we're being proactive and looking at that. So Mr. Pritchard has a good idea of where we stand in relation to capacity and the few buildings, and I'm happy to report it's a few, where we're still watching, watching things closely. And of course, some of that was reflected in the CIP, the proposed CIP we brought forth in our strategy for addressing some of that.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Can I just start out probably, I'm going to mention the R-word, redistricting. I know this board paused the conversation last year, and we dealt with some of our hotspot areas. And given what we've already heard about fluctuating enrollment, we've looked at capacity, we've made programmatic changes, I'm just going to start out by saying, I've really, I've spent a considerable amount of time, as you know, and some of staff members know, and my colleagues know, especially looking at the data for Glen Allen High School. And that's what I'd like for us to focus on specifically, as well as some of the other high schools that are having some capacity issues at this time. Can you tell me about the programmatic changes that we've made that folks listening or that may watch this back are not aware of, that are actually going to favorably impact functional capacity or daily enrollment in our buildings, specifically Glen Allen High School and Deep Run High School and perhaps Freeman High School?
Yes, ma'am. We know that the, the two major programs that we have is HVA, and we have our ACE programs, and we've already seen how that they can decline the enrollment, that they can decline the enrollment for those schools. For example, with Deep Run and with Freeman, if you take out the ACE Center students that leave each day, those, those two schools are actually dropping capacity under 100%. Glen Allen High School was slightly higher. So after you remove the HVA students, and then you also start taking out the ACE students that leave on day one and day two, they drop down. They are right at close to 100%. I think it's like 103%, but that was a significant drop of 4%. And we are still experiencing a little bit of our number decrease in our ACE Centers as well, but we are, we do envision them, those numbers coming back and growing stronger. We are increasing more seats, will create more opportunities, which should have a bigger impact on secondary schools, particularly, I mean, our high school secondary schools and the enrollment capacity at those schools.
Okay, and since we, since we did talk about, or we've, we've talked at different meetings, but I want to make sure it's all in one conversation. If you could please talk about, just highlight how CTE enrollment is currently lower, and then how our CTE program has changed. It used to be morning-afternoon impact, so let's highlight that, how it's day one, day two. And then let's highlight the $53 million investment into our CTE program that hopefully buildings will open, Dr. Cashwell, perhaps fall '23?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay, so if you could just highlight those, please, and how that's going to make an additional impact in capacity.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, two years ago, I know that the, the ACE Center moved from, and morning-afternoon programming to day one, day two programming. With that part of it, I mean, there's a good portion of your students that do leave that school for a particular day. I believe it was with, specifically to Glen Allen High School, that would be 57 kids, students on day one and 57 students on day two that, that would leave, that actually lowers the enrollment capacity in that building. We are increasing seats, we are expanding the program. Mr. McBacon and his folks are creating more opportunities for students to be involved in ACE Center programming. So we do expect to see those numbers to increase as those opportunities to present themselves, and we should see less students within our buildings leaving to go to those ACE programs.
And I would add to Mr. Pritchard's comments, he's absolutely right. So while, just like our enrollment across the board is down, as is our enrollment in our CTE programs compared to traditional years, and so, you know, certainly when we talk about the seats that we're adding... talk about the seats that we're adding based on that incredible investment, our Career and Technical Education Program, what we do know from trend data is we were turning away about 900 kids or more who had interest in CTE programs where we didn't have seats. So, there's a high level of confidence that as we increase the number of seats, it increases those enrolled. And when you, again, subtract out the day one, day two, what we're really seeing even now with lower CTE enrollment is that some of our schools that were just a bit over 100% capacity were dipping each day once you subtracted those students closer to the 100% or lower range. And remembering that 100% capacity means the building is filled with students the way it was designed to be. It's at capacity. It was built for that, for that number of students to be in the building there. So, yeah, I think, and I would not mention, but also coupled with the additional Career and Technical Education seats, we'll see two new high school specialty centers coming onboard, the Hermitage Center for Allied Health and Medical, as well as the Environmental Studies Program. And again, when we look at historical data of the number of students applying to some of our centers and not having the seats, we would anticipate. And while we can't say exactly how that would break out by high school, we know it's students potentially leaving their homes, own schools to participate in a program. So, I think that also helps us balance capacity across our secondary programming.
And then, Mr. Pritchard, and we do, we are currently, we are continuing to look at this. I mean, we're not losing sight of it. We do look at this every year.
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard, can you tell me what else has changed during our planning process? Don't we have more collaboration with our counterparts in the planning department on the government side now? Can you just highlight that, please, so that we are aware of the growth?
Yes, yes, ma'am. I mean, we've had great discussions and opportunities to collaborate with county planning, looking at the projects that are coming up before the Planning Commission, before approval, working with them to determine what type of subdivisions are going to be built and what capacity that's going to bring to that area and to our schools.
Do we have a feel for when shovels are actually hitting the dirt?
Well, sometimes that becomes a little bit more of the discussion that becomes more difficult to obtain because that is, as much as we would like to know that information, as much as the government side would like to know that information as well, it eventually comes down to the contractor that is going to do the work itself. And that will start to dictate. I mean, obviously, you can start looking for signs when permits are starting being applied for, and when they're going to be accepted, and you get a general idea of when the shovel is going to hit the dirt, and we can start looking at planning for schools.
But you, the planning process, I mean, our collaboration and more communication with the planning process has improved, correct? Or changed? But I would say improved.
Either myself or Mr. Briggs will go to the Planning Commission meetings and go to the hearings, either virtually or in person. I know that the discussion for face-to-face meetings and discussions has been a little bit more proactive between the two sides so that we're in this. I mean, we realize that we have two major areas of growth along in the Three Chop District, along Kane Road in that area over there, and then along the Route 1 corridor with Green City. So, we know these things are coming. It's just a matter of when the development's going to happen. Just to give you an example of how we try to work through this, we know that the Green City development is going to be about a 15-year process. So, it's lengthy. It's, that becomes the challenge.
No doubt. But I think, to your point, Mrs. Consella, I would also say that, you know, I think that strength in collaboration, and while there are always some unknowns involved in a planning process, I think what we do know and the timeliness of knowing and understanding that and the collaboration is strong. I would also like to point out that we are joined by Brandon Hinton, Deputy County Manager for Administration as well, and I thank him for being with us at our meeting and, again, just speaking to that continued collaboration as we, you know, look to see growth happening in our county, which is a positive thing, understanding how we can balance the needs for schools and the issues around capacity appropriately and plan for that.
And then, Mr. Pritchard, at this time, do you feel comfortable? I mean, I know I do. I feel like we've looked at it and the impact and the decrease in enrollment and just the positive programmatic changes that we've made. And again, circling back to the R-word about redistricting, redistricting isn't necessarily the only path out of overcrowding. So, I think, Dr. Cashwell, I thank your team for listening to the board when we asked for programmatic changes to be made and perhaps think outside the box and how creative could we be before we had to talk about redistricting, even if it was at a hotspot, even if it was a hotspot. So, thank you. And then, thank you, Mr. Pritchard. I have another question for Dr. Grant. In looking at the PTR for HVA, I did note that it was higher. Can you shed some light for me on why that is?
As a district, we tried to accommodate as many students as possible as a result to the COVID response. But we did provide additional resources to HVA to accommodate the higher PTR. For example, additional instructional assistance.
Okay. So, the teachers in those, the students in those classes have additional support from instructional assistance, right? Just not, not just the teacher, but the teacher has additional support to help support the students virtually?
Yes, ma'am.
And I would also note that in any of these cases, and I know Dr. Grant carefully pointed out the difference between class size and the PTR and looking at an overall ratio, and you're counting all the adults who may work with students rather than the individual assigned classroom teacher, that these classes are within the recommended SOA and SOQ for class size. And so, while you might see higher PTR ratios in HVA, that doesn't mean in any case that there's overload.
Okay. Thank you. That's all, Head Chair Cooper.
Thank you, madam. I really appreciate that. Ms. Shea?
Thank you so much. I love these PTR numbers. Would it be possible for us to, as, and I know PTR is not the same as class size, I'm going to use them a little interchangeably right here, but we know that, you know, the average class size or the average PTR doesn't always tell the whole story. Would it be possible for us to get that comprehensive breakdown?
Yeah, absolutely.
Perfect. In self-form, preferably. Thank you. And then, you know, looking at the cohorts moving through, I think what's really interesting with the graph that Dr. Hinton shared with us is not necessarily to compare kindergarten from last year to this year, but to look at that, how that cohort moves through, right? And we, obviously, we all, we all anticipated seeing that jump as that kindergarten cohort moved from last year to first grade this year because of the unusual circumstances. But, you know, kind of looking at those cohorts through, I think there's a lot of interesting things to pick through, which I won't do all right now. But as we, it looks like annually, as we go from eighth to ninth grade, we gain a ton of students, and then it kind of decreases through high school. So, lots of interesting trends to pick through that I will not do right now. But I wanted to, I guess, piggyback on Ms. Consella and the conversation she opened up about redistricting. And so, when we look at capacity, there are four schools right now that are over capacity this year. Glen Allen High School, which Ms. Consella has already spoken to, Deep Run High School, and Rivers Edge, which I will leave to Ms. Ogborne, and then Freeman High School, who is in my district. But as Mr. Pritchard alluded to, once you subtract out the ACE students who are not in the building, we go from 109, sorry, 100.9% capacity to about 99.4% capacity, so just under. So, we had said that we would talk about redistricting once we had enrollment numbers. So, here are enrollment numbers. And I'm just going to kind of advocate from my district, and we can put all of our heads together on kind of where we go next. But when I look at my district, not only did we hear multiple times from staff that these numbers are still impacted by a pandemic, and then from Dr. Grant that it's likely to be difficult to make projections right now, that speaks to me that now is not the time to do a comprehensive redistricting. Additionally, advocating for my district, when I look at Freeman, while technically over capacity, the number of students in the building every day is under capacity. So, now would not be the time to make sweeping changes there. As we look at the rebuild of Jackson Davis, that's going to have additional capacity. It's just over the border from my district. That's going to impact elementary schools. So, I would not want to redistrict now and then have to redistrict once Jackson Davis opens. And then likewise, we're still looking at what the possible IBC reallocation and programmatic adjustments might be at the middle school level, additionally with the very exciting pending rebuild of Quayox and Middle School with more capacity. And so, there would be more changes there. So, looking at this from my district, between both the instability of our enrollment numbers, the lack of overcrowding, and also the coming changes with new capacity and the changes that would be caused there, advocating for my district, I don't think now is the time to open back up comprehensive redistricting.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shea.
I almost want to say ditto in some ways because so much of what you just said, I think, is so true. Because when I look at the numbers, and I thank y'all for crunching all the numbers and getting them to us, because it's so important for us. And what I hear is exactly what you said, that the PTR isn't always reflected in the actual classroom numbers. And so, I am hearing from my Rivers Edge parents every day, and I understand their concern. I understand their issues. Maybe some of them weren't around when we had the Redistricting Committee in 2019, but the Redistricting Committee looked at this from every way there was to look at it. And I think I'm going to steal a line from Mrs. Consella. We can't redistrict our way out of this problem. And so, in some cases, redistricting helps and solves problems as it did with Colonial Trail when we did that, and I think everybody was happy with the result, putting more students in Cackley. But I've got three schools with trailers, you know, actively with Jackson Davis Ridge and Three Chop. But when Jackson Davis is rebuilt, hopefully that capacity project will take care of some of that. Ridge right now is very much, they have 100, they have a space for 100 students. And so, but that school is configured so weirdly, but they still have three trailers. But I look at it as, like Ms. Shea said, I don't want to move kids twice. And right now, my goodness, is probably the worst time that we could do this to our families is to add that stress. But I've asked Mr. Pritchard to look at Rivers Edge once again to see if there's anything we can do to help them. There are some issues with placement of where the trailers are and the kids moving in and out of the building. I know that's an issue. And so, I know that the staff is doing, as you and I have discussed, the staff is doing the best that they can, where they do have trailers and trying to, to work with teacher schedules and that kind of thing. But when I look at the bond list, I see that so many of what is on our request for the bond referendum is solving these problems. So, I think we have to look at the whole picture at the same time. We can't just say we've got the high numbers here, but we do have a fix. It is going to require patience. Patience that's very hard to find these days, I know. But it is, I think we just have to hold fast and do the best that we can. And the numbers really do help us, you know, prove to the Board of Supervisors the need that we have. In my district, we do need a new elementary school. We do need relief in, especially for my schools, but especially Rivers Edge. But hopefully, Longan, being rebuilt with capacity, will help with Springfield Park and Longan right there. We'll get there. It's just going to take some more patience. And generally speaking, when you tell parents you have two choices, you can move to a different school, or you can be in a trailer. They pick the trailer because they don't want to be in a new school, and I understand that. And I think that's what we're looking at in this area right now. We're going to have to live with trailers for a little while. Help is coming, but it's going to take us a while to get there. Because I know at Rivers Edge, their numbers are higher than that PTR you shared. But, but thank you very much for the help. And just to my Rivers Edge folks, like I said, help is coming. It's just going to take us a while to get there. But I will echo the concern about future development. When I look at the projects that are slated for the Three Chop area, my first response is where are all these children going to go to school? And I worry about that. In our bond list, we don't have any solution for high school overcrowding. And when I look at, you know, what's coming as far as development, it really concerns me in Ms. Consella's district and mine the most. Because in that northwest corridor, there's so much development, and it's coming on Kane Road. We know that. Parks and Rec is getting ready to talk about projects on Kane Road. I know that the development is coming. So, I think we just really need to be proactive in our planning for the area and make sure that we don't continue with overcrowding. So, I would like for all of us to be looking at all three parts of this. It's the development part, it's the crowding that we have now, and the bond at the same time, so that we know we're doing the right thing in the right place. And so, when we pick, for example, the land for the new elementary school in the, in the Three Chop District, that we pick it where we need it. And Mr. Pritchard and I both have ridden the district. We've looked at where the growth is coming. We have looked at where land is available. That is the hard part. But I think we, we need to be very careful when we go down this road to be sure we're getting it right, so that we don't come back and go, you know, well, we have a school too close to this school, and all the problems that come with, with not looking at the whole picture at one time. So, but I appreciate the numbers. I know this is getting off track on a lot of the enrollment numbers, but I would echo what y'all said. Not now for redistricting. Too much change is coming around the corner. But thank you.
Thank you so much, madam. Ms. Atkins?
So, we agreed to revisit the process of school attendance zones, and we agreed to do it in the fall. Whether we're doing it to ease overcrowding or diversify schools, there's several reasons why we decided to revisit. And it is important to honor our word, to do what we say we're going to do. And the enrollment numbers are a critical piece of trying to solve for challenges, as well as create wonderful opportunities, because you can do that simultaneously. And I'm appreciative of this data. I also agree to defer the formal process, but it's imperative that we have the discussion publicly. And I believe we owe that to the public, so I'm proud of us for doing that. And given just the mere fluctuation, the challenge, and the mental space that many need in order to do the formal process, right now is just not the time. And I recognize that, and my colleagues do as well, I believe. I do want to speak straight to Highland Springs, Sandston, and Verena. I know this is something that we've touched on a little bit, not really getting deep into this particular topic. So, for me, I'd rather give you information, let you marinate in that information, and then we'll all, at some point, come together in some sort of way to discuss it. So, let me give you the thoughts that I have at top of mind. We have 10 elementary schools, two middle schools, two high schools, four specialty centers. And those specialty centers are the ACE Center at Highland Springs High School. We have ACA at Highland Springs High School. We have the Center for Communications at Verena High School. We have the wonderful new Center for Environmental Studies and Sustainability. We have four program centers. We have the Adult Education Center that's sitting right on down my road. We have Early Learning Preschool. That happens in the building that we're in right now. And we also have the Evening School of Excellence. And we also have GRAD. And not to mention, we have over 481, somewhere around 41 students that attend Henrico Virtual Academy. So, when we're thinking about attendance zones or reasons for shifting not just students, but it's a shift for the family too, I want to make sure that we understand our whole family and what all of the services that we offer when it comes to education, when we're having these discussions about capacity. And for me, it's not just capacity, it's making sure that our children are in a positive learning environment. And the goal is to really nurture social, emotional, intellectual, all of these different pieces of the students. And for me, I don't feel that we've given enough attention to GRAD. And I'm going to be very intentional in what I'm saying here because I want to make sure that our students aren't just tolerated, but- because I want to make sure that our students aren't just tolerated, but celebrated. Grad sits in a strip mall. It sits next door to the Food Lion and the Metro PCS, along with other companies. So Highland Springs, Sanson, and Verona, when we get together to discuss our whole family, all of the services we provide for students, and all of the connections that we have, we will also have a wonderful conversation about Grad as well. Because I want to make sure that all of our facilities reflect who we are in Henrico County Public Schools and our strategic goals, represent who we are and where we want to go. And we should not leave out our adult centers or Grad, or the other pieces to our family. So in addition to that, I also want to mention that we do have several of our schools that use trailers as well. We do have to exhibit patience, as what was mentioned here. But also, we need to have a strategy and a plan in place, so that when that time comes, we won't have to get ready. We will already be ready. So look forward to, over the next three months, having some opportunities to share with me and to talk about the strategy that we want to put in place and making sure that when the formal process comes, that we're coming with solutions. We're coming with a mentality of togetherness. Hopefully by then, we'll have the mental space to be positive and productive simultaneously. And I'll close with the schools, just so that if you're wondering that are at top of mind, that I definitely know we're going to need relief for, there are Highland Springs Elementary School, Fair Oaks Elementary School, as well as Highland Springs High School, particularly around CTE. I think we have some solutions already in play that's going to solve for some of this. But until those solutions happen, we should certainly make sure we have a plan and conversation about them. So Highland Springs, Sanson, and Verona, we'll have some communication outlets coming to you shortly. You'll receive that, and we'll have more discussion on how we move forward in this journey.
Reverend Cooper, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. So Dr. Hinton, can you come to the mic? So I'm looking at Slide 7 that shows the economically disadvantaged changes from 2012 to 2021. The slide is important. So thank you for showing the increase of 18%. Couple considerations that I have that will be helpful to me. In the future, it would be helpful to define what economic advantage on the presentation, so others can know that these are students who are eligible for free and reduced meals, receive TANF, eligible for Medicaid, identify as experiencing homelessness. And the next thing is, are we able to have a similar breakdown of fall 2021 membership by students considered economically per school, like you provided in fall of 2021, membership by race, ethnicity, per school?
Yes, sir.
And I would also point out, you know, I think this is a, could be characterized as a dramatic increase and certainly something that wasn't unexpected. And with the free and reduced lunches being universal, or the free lunch, or lunches at no cost, we suspect that these numbers could be higher, because in many cases, that would be the driving force for a family to indicate their economic status. And so while we've encouraged families to go ahead and provide that information, should there be other services or things they qualify for, I suspect we could see that number arise if that were to change.
So definitely with that consideration, whereas it's universal compared to kind of more centralized, I just want to be able to visually see and get a better understanding
Yeah, we can provide that.
... of where larger concentrations of economically disadvantaged students are focused in our schools and throughout our counties. So whatever we could do to kind of disseminate that and distill that, it just would be helpful visually and comprehensively.
We can provide it by school and by magisterial district.
Thanks so much for that. Next, on Slide 2 of the presentation, looking at the implementation driver that states, implement, plan for projecting and managing enrollment changes. And then on Slide 3, where we see the K-12 membership date of the last 10 years as it pertains to enrollment changes, do we have the totals for the numbers of students who were homeschooled or received religious exemptions?
We can provide that.
I'd just love to see what that number is as it relates to these, this data. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Superintendent?
Thanks again, Dr. Hinton, Dr. Grant, and Mr. Pritchard for coming forward. And, you know, certainly, I think Mrs. Kinsella put it well when we talked about a number of presentations you've received since this school year has begun. And with this sort of being a piece of information long awaited by the board, as you promised the community, you would revisit the topic of redistricting, and you needed all of the pieces of information to sort of take a stance and make a determination. And seeing our membership trends allowed you to do that. And so while the administration and Superintendent are not recommending moving forward with comprehensive redistricting, it appears, based on board member comments, that the board concurs with that position. And so we've talked about the strategies that we continue to employ related to our capital improvement plans, potential bond projects, programmatic changes, et cetera, and continue to monitor the situation so we can make sure that we're on top of those issues. So I appreciate the board revisiting that conversation here.
Do you mind if I give one point of clarity, perhaps, for our community listening?
Sure.
Is that all of us recognize that there are still challenges to be tackled for a myriad of different reasons. And in a myriad of different parts of our county, we all recognize there are still challenges that need to be tackled. However, what we are saying is now is not the time, for all the reasons each of us listed, to tackle them. It doesn't mean that we are ignoring them or that we are not going to tackle them, but we are not tackling them right now.
Through redistricting. And I think you have begun to tackle them.
Yes, absolutely, through redistricting.
I think the capital improvement plan the board put forward, as well as the board's approval of the new specialty centers and funding for expanded seats in career and technical education, would all be actions that speak towards addressing some of those issues outside of the redistricting process. And so absolutely, point well taken, Mrs. Shea. And thank you again, Dr. Hinton, for the presentation. And she's also on deck for our next presentation, along with some others. And I think they've stepped out of sight, but we have a number of guests who've patiently been waiting. Dr. Farrell, we also have staff from some of our high schools here. You're going to be thrilled to hear from them or glad they're with us. So this is an overview of our college readiness indicators and advanced placement test performance. And just like you saw, lots of anomalies with membership data. We understand that academic testing and some of those other scores, we continue to see anomalies and trends that are slightly less predictable due to the pandemic. But nonetheless, we want to remain transparent, continue to share data with you. We remain committed to monitoring progress and particularly looking at our college readiness indicators. Dr. Hinton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Today, we will be giving an annual update on college readiness indicators to include data on advanced placement, ACT, and SAT test performance. Information shared today aligns with our strategic goals of achieving academic excellence and leveraging our strength of diversity. One of the metrics used to measure our progress towards these goals is student enrollment and advanced coursework. This slide shows our progress in advanced coursework enrollment from 2018-19, the first year of our strategic plan, to 2020-21, and represents data from the graduating class of each year. By the time students graduate, we want all graduates to have access to and enrolled in advanced high school coursework, including honors, advanced placement, IB, or dual enrollment courses. As a reminder, when using the Equity Index, scores higher than 1 indicate over-representation of the group, and scores lower than 1 indicate under-representation of the group. While we still see disparities, we are encouraged that our data is trending in the right direction. We are seeing several groups moving closer to the one target, meaning that they are more equally represented in the data when compared to their group's proportion as a whole. Specifically, improvements are noted within our Black, Hispanic, White, students with disabilities, English learners, and economically disadvantaged groups. The COVID-19 pandemic has impacted our students in a variety of ways. So before looking at the performance of students on college readiness indicators, such as advanced placement, SAT, and ACT, it's important for us to provide some context to the data we are about to discuss. This slide shows test participation across the last three years. As you can see, AP test participation has increased this year, which may be attributed to several factors. First, full-length AP exams were taken digitally and could be taken at home last year. Additionally, College Board provided an extended testing window for AP exams and waived the $40 cancellation fee. Also, our Department of Federal Programs used Title IV funding to pay for 166 students to take AP tests, which usually cost over $90 per test. When we consider college entrance exams, we have seen a large decline in participation since the start of the pandemic. For SATs, the tests most frequently taken by our graduates, we've seen a decline of 43% since 2019. Unlike AP tests, these tests had to be taken in person, which may have discouraged students from testing. Additionally, for the 2021 college application cycle, most institutions offered test optional policies, meaning it was not mandatory for students to submit their SAT or ACT scores as part of their application. Advanced placement tests are course-specific tests that include multiple choice and free response sections, which are combined to create composite score. Composite scores range from 1, meaning no recommendation, to 5, meaning extremely well-qualified. Qualified means that the student has proven themselves to be capable of doing the work of an introductory-level course in a particular subject in college. Scores of 3 or greater are considered to be qualified. In 2021, 5,912 AP exams were taken by Henrico students. Of those exams, 59% earned a qualifying score of 3 or greater. This is likely due to the instructional impacts of the pandemic. You can see that prior to 2019-20, students were consistently scoring 3 or greater on around 70% of their AP tests. In 2019-20 and 2020-21, we've seen steady declines. Henrico's percentage of passing scores at 59% is at the same level as the state rate and is higher than the nation. Additionally, the performance decline since 2019 is also consistent with state and national trends. While we annually review our AP test performance data, our priority, as outlined in our strategic plan, is to ensure students have opportunities for advanced coursework, including AP courses. Research continues to show that enrollment in AP courses, even for those students who do not take the AP exam or who take the exam and score below 3, has benefits. In a recent publication released by College Board in June, study findings show that AP students are more likely to enroll in a four-year college and have better college outcomes than their academically-similar peers, regardless of their test performance. Students applying to college typically take the ACT and/or the SAT exam. The ACT are curriculum-based tests of educational development in English, Math, Reading Comprehension, and Science, designed to measure the skills needed for success in first-year college coursework. Scores range from 1 to 36, with each test having established college readiness benchmarks. Unfortunately, at this time, we don't have the state and national comparison data, but we did want to provide the average scores for our students. The average ACT scores across all testing areas continue to exceed the established college readiness benchmarks. The SAT assesses evidence-based reading and writing and math with a focus on the knowledge, skills, and understandings that research has identified as most important for college success. Total scores are reported on a scale of 400 to 1,600, and each test component is reported on a scale of 200 to 800. While we noted in an earlier slide that participation in SAT testing since 2019 has declined due to the pandemic, the SAT continues to be the predominant college entrance exam taken by Henrico students. On average, test performance on each component is meeting the established college readiness benchmarks. In comparison to other public school students, Henrico students continue to exceed the national averages. In reading and writing, we are slightly outperforming the state, but are slightly below the math state average. As you've seen, participation and performance on the college readiness indicators has varied the past two years. Examining student performance by group continues to be an important data point as we move forward. However, we want to be cautious with placing an overemphasis on the data this year due to consistencies noted previously. This table shows test performance by group on AP tests and SAT tests taken by the majority of our students. When we look at test performance by group on both AP and SAT tests, we continue to see higher performance among our Asian and white student groups and disparities particularly among the Black, students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged groups. And at this time, Dr. Farrell will share the strategies in place to support students with college preparation.
Good afternoon. During our last update to the board, I shared that during the 2019-2020 school year, our non-comprehensive high schools designated an administrator to lead our efforts to promote access to rigorous courses. You will hear more of a focus on advanced placement courses, because these are offered at all of our high schools. Duties associated with our role for our administrators to promote access to rigorous courses include: making sure that AP teachers have access to training opportunities; working closely with teachers and school counselors to monitor recruitment of students for AP courses; working collaboratively with teachers and counselors to engage parents and students in AP information sessions to bring about more awareness; working with College Board to access and utilize data, such as PSAT scores, to determine which AP courses to offer; also collaborating with teachers and counselors to create safety nets for students who take AP courses; creating ways to celebrate students for completing AP courses; and also working with school teams to consider additional methods for identifying students for AP classes. We have worked to form a deeper connection with College Board to ensure that our administrators have access to various reports and data to ensure that our teachers and students have access to resources like AP Classroom, which is a platform to support teaching and learning. In addition, I have regular calls with our College Board rep, Libby Brown, and our administrators have virtual meetings with Mrs. Brown to receive updates and support. To strengthen and further support our efforts to promote access to rigorous courses, during the 21-22 school year, we have established a partnership with Equal Opportunity Schools, whose mission aligns with the following HCPS implementation driver, which reads, "Develop and implement a comprehensive plan to increase the enrollment of historically marginalized students in gifted, advanced course, and academically-oriented enrichment programming, and provide the necessary support for them to succeed." Equal Opportunity Schools works directly with schools in a consultative and collaborative manner to identify students who are not taking advantage of opportunities to participate in our most rigorous courses. A partnership director works with an already-established school team to create specific plans to address access gaps so all students can truly have the right to achieve and the support to succeed. So you can get a sense of what all of this work looks like in our schools. Joining me this afternoon are members from Highland Springs High School and Henrico High School. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to the team from Highland Springs.
Good afternoon. My name is Beth Terrier, Assistant Principal at Highland Springs High School, and I'm joined by Grace Fitzgerald, School Counselor. We partner together to support our advanced placement students, teachers, and families. We would like to begin by sharing our AP enrollment data for you to see the progress and journey we've made at Highland Springs. for you to see the progress and journey we've made at Highland Springs. In the last three years, we've increased our class enrollment by 64%, and our number of students taking one or more AP classes by 67%. Our goal has been to identify more students for AP courses to introduce them to a higher rigor and prepare them for post-secondary opportunities. Our school counselors have been intentional when creating student schedules to not overwhelm students with AP courses, but instead create a more balanced schedule. We are proud of the support we have put in place for our students. Knowing we were increasing our enrollment and introducing students to a higher level of coursework, we needed to design a support system for their success. The first task was to create a Schoology group for all our AP students to receive more information, connect with one another, and for us to gather more data regarding their needs. School counselors offered workshops for students to receive support in time management, quality note-taking, SMART goals, stress management, coping with COVID, test anxiety, and utilizing College Board for AP credit placement. Through these opportunities, we were able to provide additional support to approximately 40 students through the use of small groups, individual check-ins, and classroom lessons. When surveying our students, we discovered they needed more opportunities to collaborate. Last year, we created meeting links for students to connect with one another regarding their coursework. This year, we are working with the librarians to allow our students to reserve library study rooms to have a quiet space to focus on AP coursework and keep up with the pace of the class. This year, Ms. Fitzgerald and I have helped students to join AP Classroom and spoken to students about the importance of taking the AP exams. We've noticed a decrease in students requesting to drop the AP courses and have put a new system in place to better support them. This new drop process consists of meeting with us individually and putting a support plan together with the student and teacher. Last year, we had 21 students drop. However, 15 of them remained in at least one other AP course. This year, three students have dropped an AP course, but all of them were an additional AP class. We knew we had to change the mindsets towards inclusion of students with varying abilities and allow teachers uninterrupted time to discuss AP data. We created a professional learning community in which we met monthly to discuss support, resources using AP Classroom, and putting together a plan for recruitment. The PLC developed a list of skills and traits of a potential AP student with the knowledge that test scores and GPAs are not the only indicators of student success. The skills and traits identified by our Highland Springs AP PLC consisted of self-determination, intellectually curious, strong communication skills, punctual and present, positive behavior, and dedication. We met with the faculty to emphasize that Highland Springs High School believes in offering an AP experience to all students who have the appropriate motivation and desire. We explained that many students have not viewed AP courses as an option or, for various reasons, have been overlooked. All teachers were encouraged to submit five names of students who have potential to succeed in an AP course. As counselors met individually with students, they referred to the AP potential list to discuss reasons for taking an AP course. When students found out that their teacher recommended them for an AP class, they were excited to know that someone believed in their academic abilities. Very few students denied this opportunity. This was also a time to share how we support our AP students and ask for additional ideas to implement in future years. This fall, we emphasized the importance of the PSAT, knowing this is an additional identifier for AP potential. We spoke to parents during the principal listening session as well as to students during our Springer chat. We had over 300 students participate in a school-wide Gizmo competition using PSAT-formatted questions. We incentivized visiting the College Board site with candy during lunch, and our math and English teachers did a PSAT question of the day with their classes. We've begun to meet monthly with our feeder patterned schools in hopes of reaching students earlier about the benefits of taking AP courses in high school. We are committed to continue the work of supporting our students, teachers, and families. We look forward to sharing our successes regarding AP enrollment and course offerings in the future. At this time, we are turning the presentation over to Erin Phelps, Assistant Principal from Henrico High School.
Good evening. My name is Erin Phelps, and I am a proud Assistant Principal at Henrico High School. One of our three core values at Henrico High School is opportunity, and we are working hard to ensure that all students have the opportunity to pursue the most rigorous courses. Much of this work was started by Mr. Marcellus Bland, who served in this capacity last year and is now the Associate Principal at Deep Run. I am honored to serve alongside my fellow administrators, school counselors, and teachers to make promoting access a priority in our school. One of our focus areas is increasing advanced placement course enrollment. As you can see, we have made growth in both the number of enrollments and the number of unique students taking AP courses over the past three years. During the 2019-2020 school year, the number of students taking an AP course was 224. Currently, we have 365 students enrolled in at least one AP course. During the 21-22 school year, we are providing our students with the opportunity to take dual enrollment courses. We are offering over six different semester courses with the intent to grow our dual enrollment course offerings over the next three years. Our school counselors and teachers worked hard to recruit students over the summer to be involved in our inaugural dual enrollment classes at Henrico High School. We have 45 students currently enrolled in these classes, earning college credits through J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College. Our enrollment is comprised of 24 11th graders and 21 12th graders. 69% of these students are those who are historically furthest from opportunity. It is our goal to move towards increased student access to IB programs in our IB high schools. Using a combination of time-tested and newly-designed approaches, students in college prep or special education may experience IB courses based on their interest. Join the middle-year program, 9th and 10th grade, the diploma program, 11th and 12th grade, or the CP program, 11th and 12th grade. The inaugural year of the IB career-related program has provided new experiences for learners who want to combine the rigor of the diploma program courses with CTE and industry qualifications. Recruitment is a major component of helping students see the many opportunities that we have to offer. We work really hard to ensure we are setting students up for success and removing barriers that prevent access to these rigorous courses. Teacher conversations and invitations are critical to this process. During the course selection process, teachers and school counselors sit down with students to help them map out their educational journeys. Our team uses the relationships that they build with students to help them see their full potential. Each year, we ask teachers to invite at least five students that have potential in one or more of our higher-level courses. When a student is invited to participate in rigorous courses, we hand-deliver selection letters to let our students know that their teachers, counselors, and leadership team see their potential and want them to join one of our rigorous courses our school offers. This year, we are excited to partner with Equal Opportunity Schools. This partnership will be valuable as we work to encourage all of our students to stretch themselves academically. As we continue to increase opportunities, we also need to increase our support for our students to help them experience success in these higher-level courses. Our counseling team has worked hard to get into classrooms to support and offer guidance to students and teachers on signing up for testing and utilizing AP Classroom, the platform Dr. Farrell mentioned earlier. We have also created a Schoology group to allow for connections among our students who are taking advanced placement courses, and we continue to grow our new-to-AP support group to work with our students who are taking an AP course for the first time. Moving from a seven-to-eight block school day has really opened up our opportunities for added support to our students. We have added elective courses for the IBCP program, college readiness classes, and SAT prep courses. As you can see, we are not only committed to getting students into rigorous courses, we are committed to their success while they are in these classes. This work is truly a team effort from our fantastic administrative team, school counselors, teachers, students, and families. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Dr. Farrell.
As I stated earlier in the presentation, there was more of a focus on advanced placement courses because AP courses are available to students in all of our high schools. We have begun to devote more attention to dual enrollment courses and are working to identify opportunities to offer these courses in all of our high schools. Currently, we are gathering information around teacher credentials to see where there may be immediate entry points. The requirements to teach dual enrollment courses differ from the requirements to teach AP courses. We will continue to have an intentional focus on the commitment we made to this HCPS community in Destination 2025 by making sure that all of our high schools are promoting access to rigorous courses to all children. This concludes our presentation. At this time, we will be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you so much, Dr. Farrell. I'm going to start with Ms. Atkins.
Thank you for the presentation. I wanted to also thank each of the ladies. I don't know if they are still here or not.
Come on.
Oh, hey. Come on back around. Thank each of you for being here. I know it's been a long day, so I wanted to tell you that I'm appreciative of you sharing your time and the effort that you put into the presentation. I'm also grateful that you included some of the kindness in your presentation, particularly, what is it, $40 fee? Let me see, what did I say here? The $40 cancellation fee, waiving that, and then HCPS federal programs paying for some of the tests. It's needed. Many families needed that. And I'm so glad that you put that act of kindness in your presentation. In thinking about the theme of being college-ready, I think a significant piece of that is having college awareness. I mean, you can't be ready unless you are aware, right? So some of my thought process was around understanding what are the college knowledge measures that we have? If you can share that with me, that would be great. So in other words, if you want me to define that more clearly for you, how are we measuring how well students are aware of college? How do we measure that?
So every school counselor, I'm speaking on behalf of Highland Springs High School, we have the opportunity to meet with all of our seniors. We have a one-on-one meeting at the very beginning of the school year. And so you meet with each senior, and you talk about what you need for graduation. But then we do focus mainly on post-secondary careers. So although college is a very important option, we want to make sure we let students know of all options. So once we know that they're interested towards college, we fill out a form for every senior. And then next year, and next week, we have the Virginia College Application Week. And every school does it a little bit differently, but we are going to use all the students who said they wanted to go to a two-year or four-year school to invite them to different things that we're doing next week. But it really does start, honestly, with that conversation with the counselor.
Great. And in that conversation, if you could help me understand some of the questions, and please know, if you do not have the answers, that's all right. I can get it at another time. I don't want to put you on the spot. I know it's been a long day. Particularly, what I'm looking to discern, what I want to better understand is how are we measuring the knowledge of the student? So you have the conversation and you're understanding, if they even understand, where they want to go, right, in their school journey. But particularly, I want to understand, do they understand what it takes? So questions like, how would you manage your time on your own? Things like that. Are those the type of questions that are being asked during that one-on-one time?
So we did a packet for our seniors, and we went over all the things that sometimes seniors think they can't go to college. We never want that to be a thought. If you have any desire to go to college, we need to make it happen. And so we ask questions like, is it a financial piece? Because we have a relationship with Grasp, and you can meet with her one-on-one and talk about what we need to do to get you scholarships. Is it the fear of the course load? How do we prepare you to finish your senior year strong so that you feel confident going into a college setting? Students who are already taking an AP course should feel a little bit of that rigor. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, but...
I might just add to that. I think she's given a great example of some of that work that's done with our school counselors and seniors. And I would speak to on a broader level and something I think we could provide for you that might, at a later date, give some more information without taking too much time here. But I think it's a great question. And that's our academic and career planning process. It really starts really early. So certainly, that conversation with the seniors is critical, but it's all of those experiences and conversations beginning in the elementary experience, leading up to middle and high school. And so we've done some things to streamline that academic and career planning process to begin some of those conversations and exposures early so that students have that awareness. And so there are some newer pieces in there, some opportunities for us to glean some of the data you're talking about, because I'm not sure that we have had a measure like that in place, but more surveying opportunities using a common platform to gather that data. You know Major Clarity has come on board recently, so we'll provide a response that gives you some more specifics related to what you're asking. And I think you gave a great example of sort of at a granular level what happens with seniors. And so thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. And then I have another question that you may or may not have the answer for, Dr. Farrell or anyone, and Dr. Cashwell as well. I'm curious, do we have data on our students that decide to go to college, successful in their first year, and graduate that have taken AP courses?
Not offhand. We do have data that gives us an indication if students are successful in their first year of college and make it to their second year. We do get that data every year, but I don't think that we've linked it specifically to AP courses, but that's something that we can certainly take a look at.
I think AP themselves, College Board, collects some of that data external from us. And so some of, I think Dr. Hinton cited actually a study and some information particularly from College Board related to success rates of students who have taken an AP course, regardless of what their score was on the exam, even if it wasn't above a 3, had higher rates of success in college based on that more rigorous experience. I think that's exactly what you're asking.
That's exactly where I'm headed.
Yes. I'm not sure we have some Henrico-specific data there, but we can certainly look at the aggregate data that College Board puts together related to AP takers and success rates in college.
Right. And so if you, there are several studies on this because while we have segmented out race and economically disadvantaged based on these testing scores, we also know that there are some students that aren't good test takers, but they're in those AP courses, and they are successful through college. So I don't know if testing scores give a full picture, particularly when we're segmenting out by race. Because when you do look at studies that look at students that are in AP courses that did horrible on these tests, they have graduated through college and have been extremely successful. So I would just recommend, when we're sharing data, that we share a more holistic picture. Because if you take those same numbers, and I'm particularly talking about the Black section that was revealed, I think it was like 24%, right? Didn't look great at all from a testing perspective. But if you take the opportunity to look at the whole story of those Black kids that took those AP courses, my daughter is one, what you're going to find is that those numbers are wonderful. So I'd like for us to really take a deeper dive and look and share a more holistic view of how wonderful and how smart all of our children are. And not just show the one piece of test scores.
Yeah, I think, oh, that's a great point. And so we showed performance data, but we also showed participation data because I agree, the participation is critically important in having more students participate across all groups. And so I'm really proud of the work our team has done on this. One of the early slides around the Equity Index related to participation in advanced courses, again, whether it's AB or IB, AP, or dual enrollment, what you see is that participation is going up, and that's the meaningful experience, right? And to see this much green, that means we're headed towards the target. That's a positive improvement. Given the unprecedented two years we've had, this is incredible work. And so while you got to hear what two of our high schools are doing, the work that Dr. Farrell is leading across our high schools, really increasing access, increasing participation is incredible because you're absolutely right. We want students to perform well in those courses, but we've got to get them in the courses first. And that participation is tremendous. So here you can see that, how it looks just based on participation.
Yeah, and I'm just going to close on the topic of saying job... Yeah, and I'm just going to close on the topic of saying job well done as far as the effort. It's reflected a little bit here. I would love to see more of it reflected so that we don't get conditioned to seeing certain things and thinking, and having a very small view of certain demographics, period, right? This slide right here, I feel like we should be focused on understanding how we're progressing. We want to be factual, but if we're going to be factual, we want to tell the whole story. And that story also talks about our kids who may not be great test takers, but to my point, understanding and having measurements around college awareness, which starts in elementary school, and couple that with data that shows you that students that perhaps take AP, and I'm using AP because we're on that topic, but take a look at students that take AP courses, get into college, and graduate. That story should be up here, too. So kudos to you. You're doing a wonderful job, and I'm excited that we'll get to that place where we tell the whole story in our presentation. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Auburn.
Thank you. I, too, am really glad to see the change in the numbers. On one of the slides, it said there's an administrator that's tasked with this at each school. I'm curious if we have a person at the middle school. I don't want to say this and then it'd just be dumped in the lap of guidance counselors who are already overworked. But do we have someone at the middle school level who is letting kids know? Because I think that's a critical piece, is letting them know what's available before they go up to sign, you know, they're looking at coursework they're going to sign up for when they're in eighth grade. We should be prepping them as early as possible. They should know what's possible for them. And to me, this is, we say this all the time, we want to open opportunities to all of our kids, but if you don't know the opportunity is there, that's the break in the system. So I'm really hoping that we're letting this know, but I'm just curious, who does this at the middle school level?
So a couple of things. One, as Ms. Terry articulated, our high school leaders are intentionally working with their feet in middle schools to ensure that students and families are aware of these opportunities. Also, there's a connection between our high school and middle school counselors, and the implementation of Major Clarity is only going to strengthen that connection. So students will be able to see the big picture of what high school looks like long before they start thinking about, you know, taking high school courses as eighth graders.
Well, and can we tie this with the information we're sharing about specialty centers? So to me, this is all linked together, and if we gave it to families, specialty centers, this is what's available to you, AP courses, this is what's available to you, all of the things that you have to look forward. If we're finding out in sixth and seventh grade what is headed, and even really fourth and fifth, because to me, that's critical. Those courses that they pick, like Algebra I, that they pick to take in middle school sets them up for success later. So to me, that's sort of the key to all of this, is starting in fourth and fifth grade. These are the opportunities ahead of you, and I think that's just critically important for all of our students countywide, that they know, we've worked really hard to put these things in place for you, now we want you to take advantage of it. I've talked to Mac about this a number of times, you know, he's trying, Mac Baiton and his group are trying so hard to change the perception of CTE, and said, to me, that is critical with CTE as well. So we let our kids know, the opportunities that we have put in place, then they're going to go seize the day. But if they don't know it's there, the last thing we want to hear is, as a junior, they say, "Well, I didn't know I could take that class." So to me, that's the thing, the cycle we need to break.
And I think you asked, like, what are the touch points for that? And we've heard about the critical role our counselors play, and certainly related to sort of this increased access and enrollment at the secondary schools, or particularly our high schools, and these advanced courses, when you're speaking to sort of that process that begins in elementary school. And so our academic and career planning process, the Major Clarity, a lot of these new additions, there are particular lessons built in, starting in fourth grade, where there are times that this is discussed. There's a platform that students can use throughout their school experience with us to begin to take interest inventories and look at our offerings and begin to map out their course, get parents involved more early on. So I think here, all of the things mentioned here are so, so important. And then, for example, at the middle school level, the advisory course, there are particular standards that are covered at various points, and lessons that all students participate in that get to these very questions and these very points.
Well, and I think that's so key to breaking that cycle of not knowing and lack of opportunity, because the opportunities are there. The key is making sure the kids know it and that they will, are encouraged to take advantage of it. Because one of the things that we've talked about for years on the board is this attitude of, well, that's not for me. I can't do that. Well, yes, you can. Every kid in this county is capable of doing it. We need to make sure that they believe it, because we believe it, and we put those opportunities in place. But thank you for all the work that you do. I will pass it on to whomever the chairman chooses next.
Thank you so much. I just have a couple of quick questions. So first of all, I really appreciate our school-based educators coming in and sharing what it looks like boots on the ground. I think that's so important. I was also really encouraged to hear some of the creative ways that Henrico High School is utilizing that eighth block in terms of extra support. In terms of going from a seven-block or to eight-block, have you heard any feedback from AP teachers or dual enrollment teachers or IB teachers who have a specific amount of curriculum they have to get through? Have you heard any challenges with the reduction of class time being about 14% for any of the given classes?
So we've been able to, with our schedule, our, the class reduction is really only between five and 10 minutes a day, so it's not that significant. The biggest thing that we're working through is the buses coming, the bus transportation, which at Henrico High School has been amazing, but also leaving for the, if they take AP classes and leaving for the Aces Center. So we're working with our partners to make sure that that's a successful transition for those students. So far, things have been, you know, things have been going really well, though, with the pacing and making sure that they're getting in the curriculum that they need to.
Thank you so much. And then the other is just kind of a general thought. So we see higher enrollment numbers for our AP classes, but it seems that we're not seeing a significant increase in the number of tests being taken, tests being taken. There's a little bit of an increase. Is it, would you say it's percentage-wise?
Right. We did have an increase last year. One of the things that I think we have to remember is that these tests cost about $90, and students are being more strategic about which test they take, you know, in order to get that college credit. So while we may have students who take five AP classes, they may take two tests or three tests or one test. Also, one of the things that we're trying to build as we provide more access to students is the confidence that you can. So that's going to come with time in terms of, you know, students feeling confident enough to take those tests.
Right. And so that was kind of the meat of my question, is really looking at those perceived barriers, whether they are internal to our district or whether they're external and like just part of the College Board system, such as the earlier test signup window being moved from the spring to the fall a couple of years ago. And also, there's been kind of, in general, decreasing number of universities that will accept college credit, particularly a three, there are a lot of colleges are looking more for a four or five. So, you know, to that point, you know, as someone who has been an AP teacher and non-AP teacher, I don't believe that the College Board is the be-all, end-all of advanced coursework. And so that's why I appreciate you bringing forth that we were using that as a talking point, because it's offered at all schools. But we're also looking at expanding things like dual enrollment, which I think is so important. I also think that our teachers are professionals, and they are passionate, and they are skilled in what they do, and in a lot of ways, creating courses where they have some more flexibility, I think they can create things that are just as rigorous or more rigorous than some of the, I'm not going to say prepackaged, because they're not prepackaged, but the externally dictated course curriculums, if you will. And so looking at trying to expand dual enrollment access, like you said, just because you can teach AP doesn't mean you can teach dual enrollment. It has to do with, it has to do with graduate-level courses in the content area. So for example, I have a master's, I have a physics degree and a master's of education. I cannot teach dual enrollment, because I do not have enough graduate-level physics course hours. And so I think that's going to be a major hurdle for us in expanding dual enrollment. So do we have any programs in place in which we could perhaps support some of our teachers that would excel teaching dual enrollment to get those additional content graduate hours?
Right, we do. We offer tuition reimbursement for teachers who wish to pursue those hours in order to be able to teach the dual enrollment courses. Yeah.
Great. Yeah, tuition reimbursement, that's huge. All right, thank you. That is, that's all I got.
And I'll just add, we're currently, like I said, collecting information to determine where we have some natural entry points. So we probably have teachers in all of our high schools who have the qualifications, but we don't offer the courses. So we're trying to identify those teachers so that we can offer those courses to our students, so they can have more options.
Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Mrs. Cancelo.
Yes, I too appreciate this presentation. It's nice to see our equity indices, that they continue to move in a positive direction, though we still have quite a bit of work to do, but especially coming out of the pandemic and back into buildings, or still in the pandemic, but back in buildings, I'm glad to see we had, we moved in a positive direction. That's, I mean, that's something. And I can't wait to see the numbers, actually, from last, well, this year. I'm concerned, so I see honors, AP, IB, dual enrollment. So do we have any data, I mean, I'm certain we do, I just haven't seen it, that shows us how our honors kids are doing? We never really talk about our honors classes, kids, nor do we talk about our college prep students. I mean, don't college prep students and some of our honors students also go to college?
Yes.
I mean, do we have any of that data? I mean, I know we talked about AP.
Yeah.
And, you know, IB and all these things that a lot of folks probably just don't understand. I know as a board member, I struggle to really understand what it all means, some of the kids in eighth, ninth, and 10th grade. I'm not sure, I've had, did I fully understand or have had access to all the information either?
Sure. And I would say, you know, we've defined advanced courses in this way here, but we know that many of our courses would be considered advanced coursework at the secondary level. And so when we really think about preparing our students to be life-ready and some of our strategic goals, we've used this particular measure as one way to track our progress towards making sure students are college and career-ready and have access, equal access to what we would call advanced or rigorous courses or studies. So I think your point is well-taken, that this isn't everything. And even still, while we've not pulled out a lot of the honors data here, what we've sought to do is take some of the areas where we knew we had much more room for growth when it comes to access and opportunity, and really begin drilling into those high-impact strategies, for example, with our AP and dual enrollment. And so, you know, that certainly doesn't mean we've let off the gas when it comes to making sure students are taking advantage of honors courses and other coursework that is considered advanced or rigorous, I would say, not necessarily meeting the definition here, but what I do think honing in on these particular indicators, particularly based on the data around like, you know, knowing that students who have taken an AP course successfully, regardless of their score, you know, perform better in college and so on, these are some high-impact strategies when it comes to preparing our students, and that's why we've used those as key measures for our strategic plan. But they're certainly not the only ones, and we would, you know, welcome the opportunity to share some broader data, as you're speaking to, around things like honors participation and breaking down some other course participation as well.
Sure. I mean, I understand why we're using these metrics, but I do think some of the other information would be valuable, and then just to show, as some of our educators, and I appreciate you guys being here, you've had quite a long day after being in your buildings, that they did highlight, you know, even if it was just one course, I think a lot of people misunderstand that we're not asking your students to take all AP classes. I think that's important, that, hey, just try one, and I appreciate you explaining the supports that you've put in at Henrico and Highland Springs to help those students feel successful, because they probably have not felt successful or did not know or think that they could do it. So that's important, but it's important for every student. Dr. Farrell, are we doing that across the board at all nine high schools, not just at Henrico and Highland Springs as it was presented?
All nine high schools, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then I'd be interested in hearing more about dual enrollment, especially our barriers. It sounds like the, as Mrs. Shea just said, the being qualified to teach the courses, and then teachers who are already perhaps still in debt from school, from their tuition from when they went to school, that, I mean, I'm glad to hear that we would offset their tuition, but I'd really like to hear more about that, because that, to me, which students have access to dual enrollment, because, so that, and again, as to college debt.
Yeah, I mean, I think it is. And, you know, we have really successful ACA programs, which of course are built on that dual enrollment concept and structure, but what we recognize is even students who may not have chosen the ACA specialty center still should have access to perhaps, whether it's an IB course, an AP course, or perhaps a dual enrollment. So there are lots of benefits of each, but making sure that we have equal access to those across our comprehensive programs and even outside of our specialty centers, and so really trying to build that structure.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that. And then, isn't there also a pay differential if you're teaching in the ACA versus if you were teaching a dual enrollment in a comprehensive high school? Is there a pay component there? Because if there is a challenge for us there, I mean, we're going into budget season, so I just ask that be considered.
Well, I would imagine the piece there has to do with Reynolds Community College and some of the duties associated with, you know, these students are earning the Reynolds diploma, and so I think that's part of what that responsibility is and why there's the extra compensation there, related to a standalone dual enrollment course, but because of this is a full dual enrollment program that leads towards that, obtaining the associates, it's, the duties are different.
Okay, so the duties are different, even though it's still a college class? Okay, so I have a little bit of learning to do. See, I sit on the board, and I don't have understood, I don't have access to all the information currently, so...
Yeah, we'd be happy to share, and I can get you more specifics on that. I don't want to misspeak about that, but I believe that has to do with the differentials related to some of the responsibilities through the, you're duly enrolled, not just in one specific course, that mirrors the college course. So a standalone dual enrollment course would mirror the content and rigor of the similar course offered at the community college taught solely by the teacher in Henrico County Public Schools. And then because those have been cross-mapped, you can earn the credit, the college credit. But where our ACA program is slightly different in that you're accumulating a series of study that equates not only to individual course credits, college credits, but the full associate's degree. And so there are some differences there.
I understand earning the degree there. I was just thinking of the staff that are actually doing the work, that wouldn't they have to have some of the same qualifications to teach the class?
Oh, certainly. I see what you're saying.
Right.
Yeah, just thinking about the duties. Certainly, we can look at that, yeah.
Because that is going to be a challenge for us in the budget, and I'm just looking forward to, now, we should expect to see the indices continue to improve, especially with our new Major Clarity software, right? And the emphasis on trying to get access, opportunity, and information to our families much earlier, right? We should continue to see positive trends, for really from here going forward.
Yeah, as systems change, right? So I think, you know, understanding patience was brought up by a number of folks presenting data, you know, understanding that, you know, some of these changes are not necessarily overnight. It's about creating systems and structures that lead to long-term systemic change, and that's what we're after here.
Right. Okay. In the interest of time, I'll just follow up outside of this meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cancelo. So quickly, I've just kind of got two focus areas for me. First of all, when I look at the presentation like this, including the data that shows the disparity between certain groups, it leaves me questioning what's missing from the data beyond concerns related to just access and opportunity. What's the why? Why are black students, students with disabilities, English learners, and economically disadvantaged students are all underrepresented as it relates to advanced courses? Do we have... Do we have any data or even do we collect the data on perceptions, beliefs, and even attitudes towards advanced course enrollments? If not, this information for me would be critical in understanding another side to the question of why enrollment numbers are low for these particular groups in advanced courses or even applications to the governor's school. Do students feel the courses or admission to schools like the governor's schools are attainable? Are they unwelcoming? Do students feel the courses are irrelevant to their plans post-graduation? Are the costs associated with registering for the exams and paying for the exams cost prohibitive? At our schools, where we have the large concentration of black students, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, what's the school culture or climate at these feeder schools surrounding gifted education, advanced courses, college readiness, if that's the interest? What are the students saying? What are the counselors saying or seeing to get a better pulse on the perceptions, on the beliefs, on the attitudes towards advanced course enrollment? So I see the superintendent ready to answer.
And I think they presented a great slide, and I don't remember, it was probably similar presented for both Henrico High School and Highland Springs. And we can probably capture one of the slides that talked about that robust nature of supports, because I think it's a lot of the things you just mentioned. We talked about cost prohibitive nature, and so things we've done to eliminate that cost, the stigma, the perception, staff members who recommend students for courses, understanding what does potential look like. And so training our staff to understand that when we're talking about the potential to achieve and succeed, are we looking for the same indicators and not taking a more holistic approach? So some of the things that have been done, and I was hoping maybe someone could advance to that slide while I was speaking, just for the essence of time. I think, yeah, you know, yeah, this one, I think, will work well, too, just thinking about the recruitment thing, piece of that, and some of the purposeful discussions that are happening with the feeder pattern middle schools and reducing that stigma, encouraging, again, you know, at some point, we have heard anecdotally from students, they they might not opt for an AP course because of the associated potential risk with the rigor, right? So understanding it's about not necessarily the AP exam or score, but that you participated in this and what that can mean for you. And those, you know, some of that comes from conversation. And so the great work, I think we heard from the two high schools represented tonight, speaks to how they're working to get around some of those barriers. And so, you know, we agree wholeheartedly that the data has led us to the moment where we're digging down and figuring out what can we do to change this, right? So the data, as we looked at it two and three years ago for the first time here at some of our meetings, saying this is not an accurate reflection of a student's ability, they're not being afforded opportunities, whether it is based on render, race, gender, if it's disability status, what can we do to increase those opportunities for all students? And I think, you know, we can continue to dig more into that, but I think some of these pieces that were pointed to by the two high schools, I think, really get at how they're addressing those student-specific concerns.
And if I might add, Dr. Cashwell, Reverend Cooper, we are in the process of collecting that exact information that you referenced in terms of student perceptions around higher level courses. So within the next few weeks, we should have that information for each of our high schools.
Now, I appreciate that. I think, again, that that why piece about perceptions, beliefs, and attitudes, I think that is a definitely critical component, you know, because we're so intentional about access and opportunity, but that, I think, that's not the comprehensive, you know, inclusive inclusivity of the entirety of the picture. And so really excited to see that.
And it's the perceptions of not just the students, but of our staff, you know? I think it goes hand in hand.
I appreciate it. So my next statement is more of an observation. I appreciate yours presentation and learning about the student supports and recruitment efforts as it relates to college readiness that's happening inside our schools, like Highland Springs and Henrico High School, Go Warriors and Go Springers. But as we talk about next steps and having an intentional focus on access, it's important to include in our conversation, I believe, what's happening outside of our classrooms and schools, the advantages and the additional supports that many of our students are receiving that do impact SAT, ACT, and APA exam scores and access to advanced courses. For example, our students who have been traditionally overrepresented on the Equity Index as it relates to advanced courses and college readiness are Asians and Asian and white students. I'd love to see that if we have data from surveys, focus groups, even general conversations about any outside supports that the students may have received, such as private outside tutoring, test prep courses, academic coaches at any time during their secondary school, because then we can talk about how to expand access to some of our underrepresented students in a more equitable way. These outside investments in our students contribute to creating these disparities, and that that additional help widens the gap between the haves and the have-nots. And so we have to at least knowledge and try to figure out what what's the other assistance they're receiving that that's that's external to the school, that's that's comprehensive to the outside influences that contribute to those disparities. Do we do that data? Do we have that data? Do we even?
I don't think we have that specific data, but it's something that we should, that we can consider.
Well, thank you, Dr. Farrell. Thank you. Appreciate it, Dr. Cashwell. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you again to our presenters. Really appreciate the presentation, a meaty one, a critically important topic, great questions from board members, and certainly we owe you some follow-ups, and we'll continue to dig into this topic as we expand access. Thank you so much. The next series of items are all opportunities to review information that's previously been provided to the board and is provided, of course, through Board Docs, for which I'll be seeking your approval, funding, et cetera, at our monthly meetings. So I would just offer an opportunity to run quickly through these items and see if the board has any questions. The first is a review of our heating, ventilation, and air conditioning replacement and improvement grant funds that I'll be asking the board to accept those grant funds later. Are there any questions about those funds? Also, have provided information related to grant funds in support of screening testants for assurance funding and the establishment of 13 nursing physicians. I'll be seeking the board's approval of those grant funds later this evening. Are there any questions related to those? Okay. Also, we'll be looking for you to accept the annual audits of our school activity funds for our fiscal year ending June 31, 2021, and provide, of course, have provided the board a summary of our audited general fund results of operations for that same year. And of course, we're happy to answer questions you may have later at our next meeting as well. But any questions we could answer related to that now? All right. And the final item would be an opportunity to review the construction contract for which I'll be seeking your approval to Superior Excavating Construction Company for the improvement of the parking at Moody Middle School. Any questions there? All right. That concludes items I have for this meeting.
Thank you so much, Madam Superintendent. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Board members, is there any unfinished business? The next item on the agenda is new business. Board members, is there any new business? That being said, our next item on our agenda is the announcement of meeting dates. The school board's next meeting will be work session scheduled on Thursday, December 9, 2021, at 1:00 PM, and the 5:30 PM public input session on proposed 2022-2023 annual financial plan, and a monthly meeting at 6:30 PM in the New Bridge Learning Center auditorium. The meeting times, as always, may be adjusted if needed. No more items on the agenda. This meeting is adjourned.